Good evening, everybody.
Mr. Mayor.
Welcome to tonight's city council meeting with April 2nd, 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, we'll raise for the invocation and then we'll ask, Tony, would you mind leading us in the pledge after we're done with the invocation?
Right.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this wonderful, beautiful area that we live in, in Yuba City and the surrounding areas. We just thank you for the awesome responsibility that you've placed upon our shoulders. We pray that you will just give us ears to hear and wisdom beyond our years as we make decisions to affect our future and the future of this community for decades to come in humility. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Tony.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no items to report from closed session.
Thank you. Item number one is a presentation for the Sutter County Library. We have James Ochsner. Welcome, James.
Mayor Harris, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. As you may know, maybe you don't know, some of you know me, I'm James Ochsner. I'm the Director of Library Services for Sutter County. And maybe you also know that we celebrated 100 years of service in 2018. I believe the mayor was at one of our events for that. And this milestone, I think, is one that we can all be proud of. It's one that hopefully we can maybe build on to ensure continued support for lifelong learning in our community and well into the future. So, a little background, the library is a county general fund department which represents about 1.85 percent of the general fund spending of the county. And it makes up less than one-half of 1 percent of overall budget for the county. In the current fiscal year, the library has applied for and received grants and donations totaling a little over $328,000, somewhere in that area. And so, as you can see also, the current, oh, thank you, the current projected budget is about $1.7 million. So, obviously, our largest source of funding is the county of Sutter. Other sources of funding and partnerships are on the slide there. I think the top one there is one of the biggest grants that we receive. It's a generous federal grant administered by the California Department of Education, which is a Workforce Investment Opportunity Act Title II Adult Literacy Grant. And then, of course, we have good support from the California State Library, California Library Literacy Services, which also helps support our literacy program. And I can't move on without mentioning the Friends of Sutter County Library. And the others, there is support, sometimes financial, sometimes we are just kind of pooling resources and partnering on projects together. So these numbers kind of help tell a portion of the story concerning the relevance of the library to the community. We serve nearly 5,000 people in the community each week, so we have really heavy foot traffic. A lot of days we'll have 800 to 900 people through the door, maybe on a quiet day we'll have 500. We have 44,000 active library cardholders and just over 300,000 books and other items checked out last year. Also, out the back door, we send about 38,000 items a year to libraries that we're doing interlibrary loan with. So, that also is, I guess, it'd be activity that we don't, that people don't actually see. So it's going in and out the back door, and then we bring in about 40,000 items. A lot of that is because we are a partner library with Sacramento Public Library Systems, so anything that you see when you're on their online catalog, we're kind of sharing in a way, even though we have our own book budgets. So if you see something that's in a branch in Folsom or Woodland or one of the Sacramento branches, you just click on Request and you can have that item sent here to Yuba City so that you can check it out here. So, a lot of, a lot of movement of materials in and out of the building. So our main branch is, obviously, in Yuba City. Had three homes previous to the current location, which was actually built in 1971 and then opened in 1972. So, there were, have been really no major renovations or remodeling in the building other than new carpet. And we did ADA restroom remodeling a few years back. So, other than that, the building pretty much is what it was when it first opened. Originally built to serve a population of 14,000, now serving, as you know, I hope I got the population of Yuba City correct, but 66, 860, growing toward maybe 70 here soon, huh? So nearly half of the Yuba City population holds an active library card. When I call it an active library card, that just means that these are cards that are being used. We don't keep cards on record just to say we have this many cards out there because people move away or whatever. We just delete a card if it hasn't been used for a certain amount of time, and then you have to get a new one. So, we just like to make sure that we always have up-to-date figures about who's using the library and how many active users we have. So, we're kind of in the process of proposing to the community expanded services and efficiencies in this building through redesign. This is a simplified version of the space usage at the Yuba City branch. It's very simplified. As you can see, it's kind of standard public area, staff workroom area. The staff workroom has a lot of potential and that we don't need that much space anymore. The only meeting room serves as a classroom, which is written into our grant for our literacy grant. So, they have first dibs on that room at all times, so it's kind of difficult to lend it out to the community. And then, the front desk, you can see, is, maybe you can't really tell from here, but it's oriented so that when you come in the entry, you see the back of the staff instead of the front. So our staff doesn't really see who's coming in. Everybody's coming in kind of behind them. So in April 2018, Guadalupe Rivera, the Senior Civil Engineer for Sutter County, he prepared an advertiser request for proposal for an architectural firms to do a space study, which would incorporate also an innovation center into the library. The top four firms that submitted proposals were scored and interviewed and visited by Guadalupe and also Arnaldo Rodriguez, who used to be with the city, and myself. So HGA was the group that was chosen. And then in September of 2018, they held a brainstorming session with library staff and HGA designers, along with Guadalupe and Arnaldo. And then in September 2018, the, the project, I guess, they sent us a, kind of an updated proposal and a layout of what could possibly happen at the library. So, this is the result of that. This is a bubble diagram produced by HGA. As you can see, it's much more detailed than the other one. And it addresses some of the issues that we've been concerned about. Desk placement is, the desk is reoriented toward the front door. We have also, and public meeting rooms added, so that orange, the orange spots there, I think you can see it, says "meeting," those are actually pushed into the back room area. And those would be for public use, as well as the technology on display or the Innovation Center, which would take up the space immediately. When you walk in, you'd see kind of all of the newest technology that we're kind of excited to have, and that, a lot of it's provided through the state library. So we have grants that provide things like virtual reality stations and 3D printing and that kind of thing. So, that is, then just a few other minor changes that wouldn't be really structural, like moving the teen area from one corner to another, rearranging shelving, bringing shelving down lower so that you can see through the building a little bit better. And just some of those types of things, as well as moving our history room from its present location to where the staff break room used to be. Just gives a little bit more space, gives it a window, makes it a little bit more pleasant place for people to kind of look at some of the things we have in there. So, I think it's kind of a nice plan. It reclaims space that was in the staff area before and now can be used for the public. And we don't have as much need as, we use more technology, we don't really have as much need for all that staff space in the back. In fact, I think I was told that we were, I think, the building when they first opened had 20 employees when they'd open every day. We open now with about six to eight. So, quite a difference. We don't need all of that, all that extra space back there. So the project that we're hoping to do includes five phases. And we hope to get some support from the city, as well as we would have funding from the county, county library impact fees, as well as Friends of Sutter County who have money that they are, it's burning a hole in their pocket. So, at this point, it's estimated that the project itself would probably cost around $1 million. The 171,417 is just, just to get started with the plans. And so, we have already done one of the steps in that, in that proposal.
James, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Can we go back one slide, please?
Yes.
On the left, be your, be your right bottom hand, excuse me, your left bottom-hand corner, where you have the adult and that center area, is that going to be open space or is that?
Right. It's, it is open space right now. We have tables there for people to use for studying. One thing we like about the library, there's a lot of things we still like about it, that it's, it's a nice open feel when you walk in, a high ceiling, a big open space. And what we've ended up using that for is for programs. So, in the summer, when we have summer reading programs, we often will have entertainers come on Thursday evenings, and the crowds often are 200 to 300 people. So we just move all the furniture out and everyone kind of gathers in that space. So, we don't want anything, anything too permanent in the middle right there.
Because I saw everything labeled except for that center area.
Right. Right. And so even right now, it's not really labeled.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So, I'm more than happy to give personal tours to anyone who would like to come into the library. I'm glad to kind of show off what we do have. And Guadalupe's here tonight, too, so if you have any questions, additional questions, or if it gets too technical for me, I just look at him and then, thank you.
Any questions?
Through the mayor. So you, you mentioned that 171, can you go back to that slide, please? One more. There you go. To, for the preliminary work, oh, it's proposed, okay. So to pay them, is that what it is?
Right. So that's, for the construction documents, do you want to talk a little bit more about what that all includes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Yes, Guadalupe Rivera with Senior Civil Engineer with Sutter County. Yes, the, the fee for that includes the total design for the architecture firm that'll get us through construction documents. So, that would be a complete set of plans for the preliminary design that was shown now, that's shown as a bubble diagram, that would get us the complete design ready to go out to bid.
Oh, to go out to bid?
Yeah.
Oh, I see. So what, where did you get the $1 million proposed?
So that, that is a estimate that we are considering as, based on the preliminary diagram that was drawn up and discussions with the architect themselves as well. But we will be able to get detailed cost estimates as we proceed with the design if we are able to move forward in that direction.
And at this point, what has, has this been presented to the Board of Supervisors?
It has not. So this is our first opportunity to get before either the council or the board. Although we did, we did go out to, we did present before the board when we went for the RFP for the Architectural Services.
Oh, okay. So when you, James, when you mentioned that you have, which is a lot of people, I'm just really impressed, 5,000 people coming in through your doors, so that, is that, is that to say, fair enough, just Sutter County or is there people from Yuba County? I mean, where are all these folks coming from?
Right. I mean, the majority are going to be usually Yuba City, but we do have visitors from other places as well as Yuba County. So, that's why I put the number of cardholders, like, half of Yuba City has, because our total number of cardholders is 44,000. The number of Yuba City cardholders is around, I think, 38,000, something like that. So, yeah, we do, and, and of course, out of town, people coming in from out of town.
Right. No, very impressive. I mean, it'd be interesting to know what the Board of Supervisors consider this project, what their thoughts are on this project as well. So, I would be happy to go on a tour and watch the whole process. I'd be more than happy to do that.
Happy to give tours.
I would, let me know and we'll do it.
Sure. Okay.
All right, we have one speaker card from Linda Baker. Thank you, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Linda Baker with the Friends of the Library. We are a 39-year-old nonprofit organization with 120 members that supports library programs and staff through fundraising and advocacy. Our vision is a thriving library that is a leading resource of information, recreation, and discovery that's accessible to all. Our major source of revenue is proceeds from sale of donated books in our Bookends Alcove and book sales the first Saturday of most months. And we sell those books at 25 cents apiece. Later on, I'm going to mention the figure of $50,000. And as I wrote that, I thought to myself, that's somebody schlepping around 200,000 books to raise that $50,000. We financially support a variety of programs such as summer reading and have 50,000 waiting to support the future needs of the library. We are also the umbrella nonprofit for the Dolly Pardon Imagination Library. I don't know if you're aware of that. Children enrolled in this program receive a free book by mail each month until their fifth birthday. I'm here tonight to invite you to join the Friends of the Library and encourage you to stop by the library next week, which is National Library Week. We will be treating the staff to lunch as our thanks to them. Please add your thanks to the professionals who serve our community with an amazing degree of knowledge and courtesy. The Library Week theme this year is Libraries Equal Strong Communities. The Friends of the Library couldn't agree more. I do want to mention, I happened to stop by the library about 10:30 this morning, and it was just kind of thrilling to me to listen to the buzz. If you don't go to the library, you need to go there. It's not a place of hushed rooms and crabby old ladies telling people to be quiet. It's just this wonderful little buzz of sound. Grandmothers and grandchildren in the children's section, the reference library and helping people find something they need, people sitting shoulder to shoulder at computers, solving problems together. It is just a magical place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else from the public care to comment on the item? All right. Well, thank you very much, James. I appreciate the time. Item number two, Yuba Sutter Arts. Welcome back, David.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, great to be back. Thanks for the invitation. It's an honor to follow our friend and frequent collaborator, James Ochsner. We've done a lot of projects together the last few years, and great to hear about the expansion plans. Whoop, what happened? I didn't touch anything. What happened? So I wanted to give you a quick update tonight, specifically related to Yuba City. We're a two-county agency and work very hard to serve both counties, both communities, along with all four incorporated cities and everything in between. So I'm on auto dial here, apparently. Is that going to, is this to keep me on, on track? So, you know, vision statements aside, we do want to change the way you think about art, but a quick look at our Board of Directors, many of whom live in Yuba City, including Mayor Harris. We, we are a nonprofit and we are the official local arts agency of the California Arts Council. In fact, next week, I'll be presenting to both Boards of Supervisors for our annual reauthorization. That's something we do each year. That's just a pretty picture, umbrella sky. We do that in our courtyard in Marysville between our theater and art gallery and looking for a place to do it somewhere else. We do a lot of school-based programs. We've just completed hosting both the Yuba City and River Valley High School art shows in our gallery. We're also part of the Congressional Art Competition and have had tremendous participation from, from Yuba City schools. Poetry Out Loud is an annual program. Participation is off the charts. We had over 50 students from, from this side, from Sutter County, mostly of Yuba City and River Valley. Is there any way to stop that or?
It's part of your program.
Yeah, that's dialed in. All right. I'll just go back a little bit. Scholastic Writing Awards is a new one that we started two years ago in conjunction with the Sutter County Museum, where we offer, again, high school students the opportunity to present their creative writing and artistic work for, for adjudication on a regional and then national level. Tremendous participation, again, from Yuba City students. We worked with the Youth Commission last year on their art show, a lot of beautiful work there. And some of the pieces turned up in various venues and they get multi-use, but we appreciate that. Last year, we brought back to Sutter County the Very Special Arts Festival, which Butte Vista School hosts for us. We began our Arts Educator Program, and Pam Novak, in the center, lower right, Yuba City High School Art Department Lead, was our first, first winner. We're very proud of our Veterans in the Arts Programs, both the bronze face casting, as well as the portraits of veterans, where we photographed over 400 local veterans. And then, most recently now, we're in the midst of our Ceramics for Veterans Program, both doing hand-building kind of projects as well as wheel-throwing classes taught by an Air Force veteran, Chris Thompson, who went on to get an MFA degree. You know about the Applause Series of Shows that we've hosted in our theater? All with the ultimate goal of helping raise money to get the Sutter Theater back open on Pluma Street. And our good friend Terry Tomlinson, we've worked with her team to get artists into the theater gallery. Again, another fundraising component of the Sutter Theater. This is James Library in Live Oak. We did a big mural project up there. And I show this Live Oak Mural Marathon picture only because we're going to be doing that in Yuba City this year, working with Supervisor Flores, his building right there at Feather River Mills that's got multiple panels on it. We're going to put that together for this summer. You've seen the utility boxes, and we're working with staff currently to do an additional set of 10, I think, utility boxes that are being chosen by the, by the city. So we appreciate the, the funding for that project. This one was one done actually by students at Yuba City High School, led by Pam Novak. I've got a lot of students from Yuba City participating in our Yuba Sutter Youth Choir. Now, and it's, I guess we're just entering our third year. We do open mic nights at Justin's Kitchen. We host the, from Sutter Yuba Health, the Tri-County Diversity Group, LGBTQ students that come together once a month for films related to some of their issues. We publish a quarterly journal, and this is thanks to Mayor Harris, a pet project that we actually brought to life in our Play It Again Street Pianos Project. So we're, we're kicking this off officially this week. The piano on the right is out in front of Justin's Kitchen. The, the business owner rolls it out during the day. Go on it. The other one, the yellow one, is out on D Street in Marysville. But Thursday night at Justin's, we'll be hosting a party with pianists coming out to, to play, play the piano, and then Friday night, we'll be on D Street. Mayor Harris, you'll be there, working on your, your chopsticks or whatever.
That's all I got.
All right, cool. We brought back the Day of the Dead event a number of years ago, hosting it now at our campus in Marysville. We've done world music events, working with Phoenix Dance and Drum, group out of Sacramento, One-Eyed Riley out of Sacramento. And a lot of these concerts are being held in, in Yuba City. For the Love of Frida, we're actually moving to the Sutter County Museum in Yuba City this year. It's gotten bigger. Jessica's very interested in that. Harvest the Arts, this is a little bit out of the city, but still Sutter County, and that's our biggest fundraiser of the year. Art Wine and Wickets was actually how we raised the initial funding for the utility boxes that we paid for at the Arts Council. It caught on and people got interested, and then the city's been very supportive of that. We started Art Crawl's a couple of years ago on, on Pluma Street, putting artists in various restaurant locations and then taking people on an art crawl from business to business. And I understand some local business owners picking that idea up now and running with it. So, cultural planning, some of you have been to presentations about this process. I won't read all the fine print. It's a good thing. We've just shared the data from the cultural, the Needs Assessment Survey that we did. We'll publish that for One and All here in the next week or so. The, the actual research was done by the Yuba Community College District Head Researcher, Dr. Emma Blackthorne. And of course, we're working with the EDC to share that data on their Economic Development Strategy Project, on, on which committee I sit. So, again, very quick, sorry for the jumping back and forth, but that gives you kind of a sense of some of that behind-the-scenes stuff we do. And I, I didn't mention something else we started this year. It's a program called Jump Start. It's a very significant grant we received from the state to bring, excuse me, arts education to at-risk and incarcerated youth in the community. So we worked both with Yuba County Office of Ed and Sutter County Office of Ed. We currently have African drum and dance instructors going into Albert Powell and Feather River Academy on a weekly basis, along with a poet, a nationally recognized poet who happens to live here locally, who we hire to go in and spend time with those, with those students in those schools. I mean, they get some basic arts education, but we kind of help them ratchet it up a little bit. The administrators love it, the teachers that we support love it. So, that's been a great, great program. Again, fairly new, and again, not something we, we put all over the front page of the paper. But, a little bit, a little glimpse of the kinds of things we do, and, and as usual, there's much, much more. We appreciate the funding for the utility boxes. I'll just leave you with a general request, and if there's a more formal process, as I have heard a little bit about this evening, to ask for funding. I think it's been quite a while since we've asked for some general operational funding, and if that's available and a possibility within a, whatever the budget cycle is, we'd certainly like to, to try to take advantage of that and make that formal request, so. Any questions?
I think so.
Through the mayor. Awesome presentation. Got a lot of things going on, good things, too. If I remember correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there was something going on with the water tank in a, in a project, too.
There is.
Can you, can you enlighten us?
The latest was, you know, there were some changes here, as you're well aware. We, we're in the process of reviewing the Call to Artists, looking at the, the document that we created last year, and working with staff on that to see what direction we want to take going forward. Utility boxes, boxes are a little easier, a little more manageable budget-wise and project-wise, but, but I know the, the Water Tower project is still, you know, very much on the, on the horizon, and we'll, we'll respond as soon as staff is ready to move us forward, so.
Appreciate the update. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Through the mayor. Ditto's, great presentation. I went to one of your presentations over in Marysville, like, three months ago, I think it was, ran into the mayor, and you guys are doing great things. Kudos there. I have a request from you, or more or less a question. Uh, kudos there. Uh, I have a request from you or more or less a question. Um, I've noticed as I've become more familiar the last couple of years with the arts here in our area, that we seem to only focus on Yuba City High, River Valley, maybe Marysville. Why are we not reaching out to all, or can you reach out to all the others? You got, uh, the, uh, Marysville Charter for the Arts, you've got Charter Schools over here, you got Faith Christian, you got Saint Isadores. It seems like if we're going to be a regional, that we should be regional. So can we reach out and get more of our students involved than just our?
We, we do.
Okay.
Trust me. Uh, I personally build the, or, or, or update the email list for all the teachers and administrators each year. Now has ever been able to say, okay, David, here are all the English teachers, arts teachers, music teachers for each district. Of course, there are fourteen or fifteen in Sutter County, uh, five, I believe, in Yuba County. Um, and we do. And for example, though, it takes time, I think, for some of the ideas and programs to gel. This year, our local, uh, Sutter County Poetry Out Loud winner was from Sutter County. They never participated before. Um, and, and I've, so I'm Sutter High, Sutter High School, excuse me. Um, the, uh, the issue, and I've, I've been a teacher in the classroom. It's like one more thing to do, you know, and God love them, they work like crazy, as you all know. And it's like, all right, Reed wants me to do poetry out loud? What the hell is that? You know, how long is that gonna take? And, and I mean, even if they're into poetry, and they are, you know, the English teachers. So it's, we just gently nudge and, uh, sometimes they come on board. Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is a new one. This year, we doubled the entries on the writing category. And now we're, that's a seven-county program, but locally, and I track it very closely because it's, you know, Yuba Sutter is our home base. Um, just locally, the participation levels have come up. Uh, same thing with congressional art competitions. So, uh, believe me, uh, councilman, I, I, uh, want more of that local participation and we'll keep doing what we can to drive up the numbers. And I've gotta take a lead from, uh, James and come back with more numbers next time to show you the number of students participating from the schools and, you know, county-by-county breakdowns and city-by-cities.
Thank you. I'll help spread the word.
Oh, please, yeah.
All the different ones. I just, from the things I've seen, it always says Yuba City, River Valley, Yuba City, River Valley. And I went, we've got so many other kids in the area. I just didn't know if it was limited to them or not and pardon my ignorance.
No, no, no. Uh, and Sutter County is the, really the rock stars in general. Uh, I've struggled a little bit with our friends in Yuba County. So, it's like, come on, get on board. We're doing this good stuff. So, yeah, we'll continue to work hard in that direction and, and increase participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
Hi, through the mayor. Uh, Dave, Abby, you guys, it's just, I can't, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm there with you guys and the work that you do is just, um, I was at Justin's and I did see the piano, Mayor, and I tried to play a few notes. They were just really bad. Exactly. I was like dee, 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 dee.
Hey, they were just tuned. They were just tuned.
Yeah, I don't know what I was playing, but it was, it's fun to see that, you know, to walk around and to see that. It brings, I think, um, something different to, to our city and, um, but going to the events, um, and over the years and how, how you're growing. I mean, you're just, it's contagious. As once you're there, it's just this contagious feel that you just all of a sudden wanna be an artist. That's like my pseudo-personality thing, wanna be an artist and do that kind of work. So I, I applaud you and I applaud the work that you've been doing. Um, and I know you mentioned funds and money, so I'm sure you'll get to that point later. Um, but it's probably important to do that sooner because we're looking at everything and, um, and I guess what I'm asking in, in all of the things that we do is that how do we share the, the love of the expense, um, to all the different jurisdictions? You know, because i- it's not necessarily we are the only ones, um, utilizing it. So there may be other jurisdictions that are not utilizing it as much, but still it's, it's part of the giving, all of us together. So I don't know if you have done these presentations, like with all, you know, Wheatland and Marys, I'm sure you have.
I mean, with the city manager, a good one tomorrow.
See, see, so are you going around and doing this to?
Absolutely. Yeah, I was in, uh, Live Oak two weeks ago and, yeah.
And, and so the ask of the funding is across the board with everyone?
Yeah. And Live Oak's funding though has been, uh, specific to the mural project. That's a year, a three-year project where they put up twenty thousand a year, but then I, I, the Arts Council has to come back with matching funds. So it's a three-year, hundred and twenty thousand dollar project to do murals all over the city of Live Oak.
Okay.
Including the one you saw at the library. So, and the, and the Mural Marathon, that funded that project too, where we did five murals in forty-eight hours, like we hope to do in Yuba City, uh, this summer.
I, I, I don't have anything else good to say about it. It's just fantastic. I love it. So thank you. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. We will.
All right, Dave. Well, thank you very much. You guys are, you and Abby do all so much work. Uh, the list goes on and on about the, of everything you're doing in the community and it's, and it's across the board from poetry to painting to murals to everything. And even your, uh, your fundraisers are fun.
Oh, good.
You know, the art and oysters that, you know.
Oh, that's, oh, that one. I didn't.
Get some piano music this time.
I know. Well, thank you so much, yes.
And on the piano thing, um, you give me credit. You give me credit, but I tell you what, the credit goes to you and, uh, Abby. Um, I, I had an idea and secured a couple pianos, one of which was a flat.
Watch what you wish for, right?
Yeah, but, but all I did was mention it once and you went for it.
Well, and, and please, this is not, yeah, this is open-ended. I mean, we're up for, always up for new ideas and, and that's how those kind of little sparks happen.
Just the fact you did, and then Recology stepping up to doing all the, literally the heavy moving and lifting and, and the wheels and the tuning and it, it, great job. And it gets, right in line with everything else you guys put your mind to. It's wonderful and I tell you, it makes a difference in a community, a community to have the arts and, and some culture out there and I really support that. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
I'll just ask anybody in the community or public like to say anything? No? Okay. We're on now to public communication. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the pains of the group. So I have a written request, um, submitted twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Will normally be a lot of five minutes to speak. I do have one from Curtis Schroder from the Acting Company. Curtis, welcome.
Mayor, council members. First of all, I want to apologize for not having wrung out my clothes before I came up here. Boy, I got caught in the storm. Anyway, yeah, Kurt Schroder from the Acting Company. Um, in the past, I don't think there's been a single year I haven't had at least three former students of mine who have not been council members. And I don't know if that's worked for me against me, but anyway. So, uh, the Acting Company was founded in nineteen eighty-three by me, Pat Hill and Dexter Black. So we've been around for quite a while. And after a peripatetic, uh, existence, we finally found a place across from Yuba City High School, which was originally a grocery store I used to go to when I was in high school. Uh, and we found that and built a theater, uh, out of it. And we probably put, oh gosh, three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into renovating it. So if you've been in there, you know what it looks like. It's, uh, I like to refer to it as like, it's like jewel, jewel box, uh, very nice theater. Uh, anyway, over the years, we have received a lot of support from the city, almost every year that we've been in existence, for which we certainly are appreciative. We currently, uh, have six main stage productions that we put on every year and also along with that six, uh, what we call magic theater productions as well. We have classes that we hold for students and have for a number of years on Saturdays. And in this year, we added, uh, classes during the, during the school week as well. The, each, each year, uh, in many past years, the city council has, uh, funded part of our magic theater. Uh, our, I, I submitted an application and you probably have seen that our costs are somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve thousand dollars, for which you've donated five thousand dollars, uh, in the past. And that really doesn't cover the infrastructure either. Even if we sell out every single show, uh, the tickets, ticket sales don't cover everything, uh, even for just the production of a single show. But we, of course, have all the infrastructure. We have the, you know, the mortgages that we're paying. We have the phone. We have, uh, gas, electricity, all the other, water, all those other things as well. Excuse me. Um, so that is, and of course, we're five oh one, what is it, two C? One C?
Five oh one.
Three C, three C. Okay, I knew I'd eventually get that number correct. Uh, anyway, so that pretty much, I think, covers, well, we also are the only nonprofit, uh, community theater in the entire area and have been so since nineteen eighty-three when, when we were founded. Uh, in fact, we were founded about the same time as Yuba Sutter Arts Council and we used to work with them, uh, on a regular basis. And I'd just like to say that, what's that? And just, and we still do. That's right. A- absolutely. And I'd like to say, since I was around, or we were around about the time that, uh, both organizations came into existence, that, uh, I'm really impressed by the work that, that David has, has done and he has, uh, made an effort to work with us, I think, more than any other, uh, you know, what do you call yourself? The director, yes, more than the director that, uh, that we've had. I'm sorry, excuse me? You're the janitor also?
I wear many hats.
You wear many hats. That's correct. Okay. So anyway, uh, we have submitted, uh, an application with all the things that go along with it. Do you have any questions? I don't know if I've covered everything or not, but.
Doesn't look like it.
Doesn't look like it? Oh, okay. Well, then.
Questions from the public by chance? I guess that's it. Easy.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to come down. All right. Number four, appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraging, are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. I have one speaker card from Phil Traynor.
Philip Traynor, Yuba City. I came here tonight to let you know that, uh, since our last meeting, when we spoke about the pensions, I have gotten eleven telephone calls and every one of them started out saying, "Traynor, what are you gonna do now?" So I'm asking the council, "What shall I do next?" That's all I have to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. I'll just comment that we are in the works of putting forth the, uh, committee together. And I was gonna address that at the end of the meeting, a few ideas that I've had and some decisions I've made in that regard. So, right now, you just keep doing what you're doing and we'll be in touch as soon as possible, sooner than later. All right. Anybody else care to speak? Items five, six and seven is our consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like, like to speak on these items? No? All right. Through the mayor? Yes. Like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items five, six and seven. We have a second?
I'll second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very well. Thank you. Item number eight, general items, appointment of labor relations consultants. We have Natalie Springer.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Tonight I'm presenting a recommendation for the city's labor relations consultant. Human Resources issued a request for proposal for a labor relations consultant and received four responses. All four companies presented before a city council subcommittee from the city council subcommittee IED, specifically Mr. Greg Ramirez, who is here, was recommended as the city's labor relations consultant. Mr. Ramirez, I'm gonna ask him to step up to, uh, provide information regarding IEDA and the services he will be providing the city.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Gregory Ramirez. I'm with IEDA, which stands for Industrial Employers and Distributors Association. Um, IEDA is in its eighty-second year. It was formed in nineteen thirty-seven, uh, along the docks of San Francisco. Uh, when the longshoremen were organizing, uh, union workers there, the employers, employers got together and decided that they needed professional representation as well. So a hundred and thirty employers, uh, including Levi Strauss, um, Folgers, Hills Brothers Coffee, uh, formed IEDA then. Um, they're, uh, they, uh, crafted a master contract, um, at the time with a hundred and thirty employers and that contract is still, uh, in existence today. There's currently ten employers now as those industries have left, uh, the market, the area. Uh, around the late sixties and early seventies, when public employer, employees had the opportunity to collectively bargain, uh, IEDA, uh, started representing, uh, public agencies in that. Um, I have, uh, six colleagues that work at IEDA and, uh, uh, all together, we have approximately two hundred and forty years of experience amongst us. Um, myself, uh, my experience is I, um, previous, I've been with IEDA for two years now and previously I worked for Operating Engineers Local Three. I worked in Sacramento and Alameda. I was the Assistant Director, uh, for public, the Public Employees Division. And, um, part of that I worked for ASME, which is the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees. Uh, I grew up in Lodi and I live in Woodland with my wife and daughter now. And I'm looking forward to working with you. Um, IEDA provides a full range of labor consultation services, uh, including negotiations, disciplines, um, just a whole list. I, I provided you a, a handout there. Our philosophy at IEDA is about collaboration, uh, respect, um, working through problems and issues. And, um, for me, negotiations are like a puzzle and trying to put all the pieces together and listening and, um, demonstrating through my actions and my words, uh, my credibility. And, um, uh, coming from the labor side, I think it gives me really good insight at the table. Any questions or?
No questions? Anybody from the public care to comment? Uh, all right. Easy. Thank you very much, sir. Moving on to number nine, SB one road maintenance. Oh, that's, that's true. Go ahead. Do we have a motion?
I motion, um, I can't read very well with my glasses because someone else.
Mixed up.
Sorry.
Move for status recommendations.
The recommendation is, uh, approval resolution for authorizing city manager to enter into association membership with, um, Industrial Employers and Distributors Association for labor relation services. And the attachments are one and two.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done deal.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to number nine. SB one road maintenance has been, welcome back, Ben.
All right. So, um, the item before you is in regards to our SB one, um, road maintenance and rehabilitation account funding, um, specifically for the twenty nineteen twenty project. So, um, I guess to start out, good evening. Um, I'm your, uh, interim assistant public works director and I have, uh, basically the item before you is, is procedural in nature, but it's a priority to maintain and improve our roadway conditions throughout the city while using the SB one funds, um, that, that our taxpayers have approved the last couple of years. So, little definition, SB one, also known as Road Repair and Accountability Act of twenty seventeen. It created gas tax and registration fees to, um, fund, uh, infrastructure, transportation, infrastructure improvements throughout California. Um, annually, there's a requirement that, um, the city adopt a list, um, to be submitted to the CTC, the California Transportation Commission, that, that's, um, approved by council. And then, um, then we do an update annually to see if we've made progress on that or not. With that list, it doesn't restrict how the city uses them. With that list, it doesn't restrict how the city uses them, as long as they're used, uh, for road purposes. But the list does establish, um, pretty much an action plan for where we're trying to put those, those dollars. So, um, here's a little recap of, um, SB one funding that's coming to our city. The projection, just note that it's a little bit off, um, from the staff report. And the difference is a, um, is a payment that's required, uh, back to, uh, the state. The seventy-five thousand dollars that comes back. So, so the numbers, I think you see one about one point one four, one point. When, there's a little bit discrepancy on that, but that's the money that's basically been received for seventeen, eighteen. And then for eighteen, nineteen, that the city's actually brought into its coffers, we're projecting to come in. So with, um, with next year's list, we're proposing to, um, pretty much stay with our last year's list. Uh, with that, last year we identified a, um, a long laundry list. Um, we know the laundry, the list of streets was way more than the funding available, but we put the streets on there just for future actionable items. If we wanted to do one out of order or, um, how we prioritize them. This year, uh, the CTC, um, basically put some more criteria in there that they wanted to look at a two-year window. And so we narrowed that list down to basically what's the projects that we're going to, um, possibly work on over the next two years. And so with that, we've added Franklin Avenue between Palora and Gray Avenue, and then on Bridge Street, um, from Gray to Cooper. With those being, um, some priority projects and with, uh, the three hundred thousand dollars for the Franklin Road being approved in last year's CIP project, CIP budget. So the proposed locations are there in green. Here's the list. We've added to the website to basically show, um, anybody who's looking kind of where that SB one money is going to go to. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding SB one and the establishment of the rest of the CTC.
Through the mayor, um, Ben, again, I don't know, uh, roads like you know roads. Uh, are these pretty much complete tear downs and rebuilds or is this something in between that?
So the SB one money you could use, um, for, for anything, really. You could use it for the guy that goes out and fills potholes. Um, for these two particular projects, they are, um, proposed to be pretty much full reconstruction. The Franklin, the Franklin Avenue project, we're proposing to save the pavement where we can. We're putting in some new, um, utilities with like, with some new storm drain and extending the sewer line to make sure we don't have to dig it up in the future. And then we'll grind, um, portions of it to save it and add on to it compared to. So we're going to save a little bit of, of this, this asphalt that's out there. Compared to on Bridge Street, it's really, um, structurally deficient, deficient. And, uh, by the time you get done with the utilities, there's nothing left. And so it's going to be a complete removal and replacement.
You're probably going to get tired of hearing this from me over the, the four years that I'm going to be here. But my big concern is when we go in and we do these projects and then we allow somebody else to come in and trench through them or, or add anything. I mean, they basically destroy a good work that's done. Um, I know we briefly talked about this before. And this is just to educate me. Is there any effort to find out if anybody's got anything that they're going to do to that roadway, um, during, uh, the construction portion that you guys are in there? So we don't end up with that, that nice road that somebody comes in and decides to, you know, put a unintended traffic stop, traffic calming device into?
Ag- agreed. Absolutely. I, I fully agree with you, um, council member. And, uh, basically the efforts right now are limited to, uh, our utility coordination meeting where we meet with, um, PG&E and AT&T, um, quarterly or biannually, depending on their availability. And we submit what projects we have on the list. So they can, um, basically we could help pre-coordinate to make sure we don't, um, do that, you know, because that's the worst thing to do is cut up a brand new street that you spent a million dollars on. Um, and definitely with Franklin Road, we're, we're working on AT&T, um, where they have to adjust some of the manholes. So we're working through some right-of-way agreements right now where they'll reimburse us for a portion of the work to adjust that, their particular, uh, manhole in our right-of-way. And so there, there's coordination, pre-coordination with that. Um, but unfortunately it doesn't guarantee that they don't come back in a year from now and, and tell me they want to do a project, but, um, we definitely try.
Is, is there any recourse? Uh, somebody comes in trenches, puts in the, uh, puts in the repair, then they're gone. And then you guys are left with, uh, with the problem and then we get pounded with the complaint. I mean, is there a way to go back after somebody who, who ruins the road, basically?
There are some options. Uh, I mean, on these with a brand new project, I would say over the last decade, we've been really cognizant of which projects get approved for an encroachment permit process. So the, any work in the right-of-way is supposed to go through an encroachment permit process, then we approve it. And then we, um, can mitigate that. If, if it either deny it for five years or, or, um, make them do something different that doesn't affect the road, or we have them mitigate it by extending the limits. Um, a lot of these issues that, um, to me, we've mentioned in the past is where all of a sudden there's an emergency knockdown or a gas leak in the middle of the weekend or at night and PG&E comes in and with a subcontractor, they dig a hole in the street, fix the gas, and then they call us the, the next week and say, hey, by the way, we, we had an emergency gas, um, fix. And then it's, it's tough getting them back. But we definitely, we've been working with their liaisons and trying to minimize that for sure. But if you have a particular spot, um, you know, recently we went back through and, uh, I think they had something like thirty-five power poles where they, they pulled out the power pole and then didn't fix the curb. And so we put a lot of pressure on them. We're, um, you know, we're going to slow down, uh, new encroachment permits, basically, until we get those repairs made. Put a little more pressure on them that way in order to get the repairs done.
With the mayor's indulgent, may I dive off here for a second? Lots of potholes out there because of the weather. When, when's our new super pothole filler truck show up?
You know, I got some bad news on that, but, um,
I didn't mean to ask that.
Uh, you know, internally, we're, uh, pretty disheartened too. But, uh, my understanding from, uh, the streets division is that the, the back order on that international truck frame is anywhere up to a year to two years. And so we're, um, we're pushing hard, looking at options to, um, we're looking at switching vendors, um, and switching different options, but, um, it's a little ways out.
Thank you. Well, not thank you, but thank you.
Any else? Anybody from the public care to comment? Sure. Step on up.
Phil Traynor, I think we all acknowledge the fact that we, we don't build roads anymore. We do make potholes. The question I have is that what does it cost us to fill a pothole?
Ben, if you happen to have that information handy?
Uh, that's a bad one.
Uh, it, Phil, I would think it would depend on how big it is and everything else.
No, I, I've seen three or four people fill one pothole. So I, I, when I drove by and saw it, I thought, Jesus.
All right.
Good money here.
All right. Um, we'll, we'll answer the questions best we can. Uh, just a, uh, respectful reminder, Phil, it's a, it's a comment, not a question and answer. All right.
Yeah, I mean, as, as most, um, understand, there's a lot of variety in a pothole. Um, definitely when we send the crew out, typically there's a, there's a guy that has a traffic element because we're in the middle of the road. And then, um, also with, with loading and unloading and, uh, what equipment, if, if they have the truck with the patch material and if they got, um, how they're going to compact it. And so usually, um, you know, unfortunately it does usually look, um, you know, for that shovel full, but usually we try to coordinate to make it as efficient as possible. So we hit as many shovel fools as possible at one time. But there's that element with traffic safety and, and just the equipment out there.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment? Nope. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to SB one road maintenance rehabilitation account project list for twenty nineteen and twenty, A and B.
All right. Motion to approve staff's recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Very well. Thank you. Ben, you're back up on number ten, Highway twenty revitalization corridor enhancement project, MOU.
All right. So, um, so SECOG, um, our regional MPO, um, basically they have a community design program where every year, not every year, every other year or so for the last, um, few have been giving, uh, out a hundred thousand dollar non-competitive grants for, for place making, they call it. Basically enhance the city's, um, community image and, um, economic viability. And so this last, um, this last year, the city put in for, um, and the third of our, um, of our grants for this corridor and other, um, another hundred thousand dollar request for, um, for funds for the Highway twenty corridor to, to continue that process to keeping, um, uh, building on improving that corridor from State Route ninety-nine to the Feather River Bridge. And so with that, um, recently we were awarded the, so there's a little bit of history here with the, the last two grants. Um, one was to basically did an outreach on the, with the, with the public, where they, where they walked the corridor. They got a lot of business input and, um, and they kind of came up with general concepts and a document on, um, how to, uh, what's the ideal way to improve that corridor to make it more pedestrian friendly and business oriented. And so, and then with that, we took it as, the next step. With the second grant, we used a portion of the money to, uh, fund the, the median improvement project from Stafford to Clark. So in January of this year, we, um, SECOG at their meeting approved the hundred thousand dollars. And with that, there's always, um, some requirements. And so with that, there's a, we need to enter into an MOU, memorandum of, uh, understanding and then a ten percent local match. So, um, so basically these funds are, are really just to improve that quarter. And, uh, and so they could be used for any sort, any sort of project from ninety-nine to twenty, if it meets those, um, kind of general goals. You know, typically it's, uh, associated with complete streets where it's landscape strips, improving medians, signage, um, monuments, uh, any, any sort of thing that's really that, uh, um, place making, um, that they refer to in the original grant. And so with this, um, in November of this last year, the city council adopted, um, the Highway twenty gateway and streetscape master plan concepts. And so we put together, uh, basically we had a consultant that kind of put down, um, uh, a master plan for the area. So as development occurs, that everybody's kind of on the same theme. So McDonald's, when they redo it, we got the same type of trees. When Dutch Brothers comes in, we could call out the same type of, um, uh, concrete, the trees, landscaping. So as, as it slowly occurs and when the city gets money, we keep plugging, um, those improvements in, but they have a similar theme. So with this, staff, uh, the original idea, we, we kicked a few ideas out. A hundred thousand dollars doesn't go very far. And, um, CIP currently in, um, in the CIP account for the State Route twenty improvement enhancements, there's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in there. And so we're, what we're thinking with, you have a hundred thousand dollars from SECOG. You got about a two hundred thousand dollar project. We could probably do the median to the east of the median we just did. So from Orange Street to Clark. And so, um, let's not set in stone. Um, it, it definitely could be any project, um, that enhances that area. Uh, but right now that's kind of the tentative plan. Um, we'd be happy to discuss alternatives, uh, council's direction. So other ideas I've mentioned, um, that have come up in the past is there's a, there's kind of a remainder spot there at the southeast corner of Plumas and, uh, Highway twenty. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, right north of, um, the optometry place there, where the old highway is. There's kind of a little dead spot in there. We've talked about, uh, maybe ideas for, um, landscaping it or turning it into like an outdoor plaza area or, um, or wave finding signage along the corridor to give, um, kind of an identity to the city when, when people roll through. So, uh, grant requirements, it's, it's basically, you know, we're going to get a hundred thousand dollars. You need to spend ten thousand dollars with it. Right now, the, that median project, we would start design, the logistics is we would start design on it, then come back to city council with a detailed estimate, ask for approval to go out to bid on that in the next few months or six months, whenever we get that, um, packaged up and come together. But with that, we're definitely open for, um, other input. And so tonight I'm asking for approval to enter into the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. If I can start with the public. If anybody from the public would like to comment on that? All right.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are we allowed to save this money for a year and get more and that way we can get the project done? Because that piece between Stafford and Clark, wasn't it like three hundred thousand? It was pretty close to that when we did that two years ago?
Uh, when, when we, um, we got a little creative where the city managed it as the general contractor on that. And it came in right around a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, I think, when I looked it up before the meeting. And this one, I think, will be a little less because we didn't have to, we won't have to bore between the two medians for the water.
Okay.
So, so we're looking around, you know, inflation and staff costs and different things. You're probably around two hundred thousand.
So we, we're planning on contracting it out ourselves and again, and that's our plan? Or are we going to go to bid and see what they do?
Well, I'm going to make sure I come in with a number under two hundred thousand is what I'm looking for. And, um, and looking at those options that's most efficient for us. And so, um, we haven't got into the design yet at this point, but we, we would definitely want to look at a project that came under, under bid and, um, and maximize the dollars.
Okay. And then just that final question, if for some reason, you know, it's three hundred thousand, just, just say, are we allowed to save that money and get another and then continue on? Like we don't have to match ten thousand the following year? Are we allowed to do that if we don't spend it this year? Can we keep it till next year?
So we have, we have two years to spend it, I believe, with the, uh, the agreement. There's two years to spend it. And there's no commitment that, um, that we do anything with this agreement. The agreement is that you spend a hundred thousand, you give us towards that. So if it's even just for the design, say we get into the design for twenty grand and then, um, we get a three hundred thousand dollar project, we want to change directions, we could use the other eighty thousand towards something else.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Through the mayor. Uh, Ben, just a, a question. In the very beginning, the first hundred thousand that came in, the hundred and ten total, it said that was done for the whole design of the, uh, Highway twenty corridor. Um, but then you talk about we have to go to design as far as this for the next. I'm hearing design that we've already spent a hundred and ten thousand on, and then I hear design that we've got to go design this next block before we can do it. Can you elaborate on, is it, is it engineering versus, versus design? Because all I heard was design and design, and I'm a little confused on that part.
Yeah, let me, let me try to clarify that a little bit. And so the first hundred thousand was, um, a framework, a guy, guidelines. And so there was no, there was no design. There was nothing I could send out to a contractor to bid. It, it was, uh, just, it was really the outreach effort, um, with the community, taking that in, um, with the needs of, of the community and the city and the business owners and packaging that into, um, ideas. It's, you know, talks about parkway strips here and there and, um, and, and try to get buildings to come up closer to the right-of-way and, and pedestrian lighting and furniture. Just a real guy, guidelines, I guess, of what to implement. And we took that a step farther with this, um, this Highway twenty master plan where we kind of really nailed down in that corridor, which sections we're going to eliminate driveways and combined, we would, um, work to combine driveways. And then where, where different elements would fit where, um, because you're in this existing built-out area where you could maybe get the parkway strips in versus where you couldn't. And so, so that's just, that's the thousand-foot level. And so this hundred thousand dollars, it's, it's where I propose to take it and actually design this with a bid package to put it out to bid so we could build it.
Okay. I'm, I'm following where you're going, but I, I guess, and I'm not trying to go back over spilt milk, but we spent a hundred and ten thousand for a concept.
You spent ten thousand, but we did spend a hundred and ten thousand total for a concept.
That's what I'm talking about. Um, my personal opinion is I've gotten positive feedback for the section we've already done. And it makes perfect sense to continue moving back towards you that tenth street bridge, uh, and continuing this. But the last thing I want to see is those signs that you just had up there at the intersection before we build out anything else. Because, uh, that, yeah, that, um, that should be the end product if we get there. We've got, we need to develop the infrastructure in between first and make it really attractive before we just go sticking signs up. So I would be in favor of the median, like you're, you're, uh, suggesting.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, um, I attended the, the meeting, it was before I was elected, on the streetscape. And, uh, and it was really pretty looking stuff. But I guess, uh, my, my concern is there's always nice to have things and then there's the need to have things. But I guess my, my concern is there's always nice to have things and then there's the need to have things. Especially in, in a budget situation that I believe the city's experiencing is going to continue to experience. So my concern at this point is that, that we charge staff with making sure that the things that we're, that we're going to be working on with these, with these monies are, are the things that we need to do to that Streetscape and not some of the nicer things. You, you attended the meeting, I did yesterday with the builders and developers, you know, there are a lot of concerns about some of the amenities that we require versus, you know, what's really needed to make, you know, traffic flow and make our city look presentable. I'm not suggesting we just continue with the, the concrete and et cetera, but you know, street trees and, and, you know, decorative this or decorative that, or, or like my colleague just mentioned, you know, huge signs. Those are all nice things to have. I want to make sure, at least from one person's point of view, is that we really pay attention to what we really need to do on that corridor and use those monies as wisely as we can. And I, I trust that you guys will. I'm, I'm just vocalizing my concerns or my opinions regarding what I saw prior to my election.
I appreciate the feedback. Definitely with, with the hundred thousand dollars, it doesn't go very far in today's dollars. And so we really want to maximize that to enhance the image and not be extra, be that balance.
Through the mayor, I, I did not attend that meeting that was referenced yesterday, so I'm, I'm not sure if, if this, this particular project that you're presenting today, Ben, is this, would have any effect on the potential future builders for them to pay for some of this?
So for this project, no.
Okay.
But, but the idea is that the city has established its master plan for this area and that the intent is that as development occurs, we try to get them to match some of that theme.
Okay.
And, and, but this is not set in stone. It has basically staff review of it and where's that balance where we could find if they have to do a landscape strip anywhere, if we had that, that ability is to make, to try to get it to match and try to make the improvements where we can. But we, the staff definitely recognizes that if, you know, when, what was the, the name of the, the Polio Chicken came in, we wouldn't tell them they need to build this million dollar sign out front, type of deal. But, but that really is where it affects the developer is we have a master plan, we're trying to put that theme in and we are trying to incorporate some of those elements in when they come, but finding that balance.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear because I didn't hear you say that there would be.
With this project, this is for grant and using existing program funds.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Through the mayor, but I would, I would, as a, as a business person that runs a business on Colusa Highway, I would tell you there are restrictions or there are desires that come through the master plan. And you mentioned Dutch Brothers and you mentioned McDonald's. I am quite certain that at some point there was dialogue within the city about what you wanted them to do. And that does have a direct impact to the, to the developer, correct?
Correct. That's what I was trying to relay. Hopefully I relayed that.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank, thank you, thank you. So on that part, thank you for clarifying that. On that, I guess that the master plan keeps coming up frequently. So I think at a future time, I would suggest that we have some sort of workshop or conversation about the master plan because there's oftentimes, not that I'm asking to change it, just to know what is happening because it's referenced a lot and at times for, it could be a lack of information for me to be able to give you a good sense of understanding and how we're, we're doing all these things. But yeah, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Through the mayor, a quick follow-up, Ben. Understanding all of this money that's coming through for the Highway 20 corridor revitalization, it can only be used on Highway 20. Only be used for certain things and I've already asked the questions before as far as why don't we do this or do that? And it gets into the whole Caltrans versus us and maintenance for them versus maintenance for us. Is really, in your opinion, what you brought forward to us because we do, this is our second year from last year coming through, we need to move forward so we don't have to give money back. Is this really the, the most viable option and what our city needs that can be done with that money versus anything else on that corridor? Because I think that's really what we're all driving to is we don't want the, the fluff. We want to make sure we're spending two hundred thousand in the best possible project.
I would say yes. And so that corridor is tough because it's state right of way. So juggling state requirements and then private property where it, it's hard just to pick one block and say, hey, I'm gonna approve this guy's driveway or their area versus the other. So being in the median, it's high visibility and it gets a lot of that bang for your buck.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, if I could just clarify something there. I agree with Ben from an aesthetic standpoint, this makes sense to move forward, but there are projects, other projects that are proposed along the Highway 20 corridor. For instance, where Caltrans is requiring or requesting that they actually remove driveways. And one of the things that was identified in this master plan is the, the benefits of removing driveways along that corridor. So one of the things that could be done is utilize some of this money to do improvements within the public right of way that would still comply with that corridor, but then also address some of the issues associated with those developments. There has to be a balance there in terms of gift of public funds, but there, there would be some opportunities to look at that as well.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Langley, question concerning the removal of driveways. We're, we just approved the traffic study that we need to update and everything here. Will this, with removing driveways help with that traffic flow study and getting us a better rating along Colusa Avenue to, to improve the flow? Because I assume that that's why the recommendation is there is there's too much in and out and cross traffic and.
Yeah, that outer lane, you just have a lot of traffic slowing down to turn it into driveways, people pulling out from the driveways into traffic, which causes a slowdown. And so the desire is to reduce the number of driveways, to reduce the, the connection points. And will it have a significant impact on traffic flow? Maybe, not, not enough probably to improve the level of service, but as we, as we drive around the city, we'd definitely see benefit from having a reduced number of driveways. Especially driveways located in close proximity to intersections where there's safety issues.
Have we considered the removal of some of these driveways in relation to, you know, just doing the median? Have we looked at the cost of removing some of those driveways?
Well, what I would say, we want to make sure we have willing landowners and developers to be able to go out and remove those driveways or consolidate driveways. But we do have a, a project that's before staff right now. Where, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, but Caltrans has requested that they remove two driveways?
Correct. So Diana's talking about the Waffle Barn site, so the southeast corner of Olive and Highway 20. So there's, there's, I think there's four driveways along that parcel on, on, on the highway side. Then there's two on Olive Street side. And so Caltrans requested to close the two, one on Olive and one on the highway closest to the intersection. And so where Diana is, is mentioned is with the willing customers. And so unfortunately, not too many people are willing to close their driveways. And so this usually occurs through the entitlement and planning processes where, when they've asked for entitlement for a subdivision map. In this case, this is where Caltrans puts their request to come in. And so maybe that's an opportunity to partner with them to help.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, one final follow-up. It sounds like we've got some additional possibilities, but my gist of item 10 tonight was we need to execute the MOU to go ahead and get the money coming and we can always have a follow-up discussion on whether we want to do the median or we want to do driveways.
Correct.
Okay.
That's if the property owner says yes.
Right, but it's, but it's two separate issues. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I would make a motion if you'd entertain it toward you want to continue discussion.
I would have just had one comment before we do that. Just, just to put it on, you have one?
Go ahead. For, for staff and the project, years ago, I'm gonna go back in the time when we put the Yuba City and the Ducks at the intersection of 20 and Staff and Stabler Lane. We got, the city got nothing but grief when we did that. You know, what are we doing wasting money? You know, we, we said this is the new gateway coming into our community. It's a beautiful site. And we had a lot of flack and got a lot of backlash for doing it. We did it. And years later, people come and they comment to the city how nice that is there. And, but at the very beginning, people had very negative comments towards us. And now it's one of the better intersections when you're pulling into the community. It's one of the nicer intersections coming into our community just off, just off the Ducks being on the corner and the, and the tree selection that we've picked throughout the years. I just wanted to mention that. So these plans that, you know, we paid for and the architect gave us these ideas, you know, this wasn't our town. He did several communities. And these other communities already have this guideline and he just showed this to the, to the council. And which, it's just a plan. I mean, it's not set in stone, but beautification brings people to our community. And like I said, the money can only be spent on certain things and hopefully in the future, we, we will beautify Highway 20 and it'd be a good thing for the community and we'll have more people coming through instead of it looking the way it looks now. It'd be a beautiful place to come to and, and drive through.
Very good. I just want to throw out there, Ben, and I think some of the, what we're talking about here, Vice Mayor, is, is balance. We want it nice, we want it welcoming, we want it professional, but we want to draw the line at opulent, right?
Okay.
So, I mean, that being said, that's difficult when you're doing something, but of course a hundred thousand of their money is, is nice too, but I'd like to just for the record, suggest perhaps we consider, I think, one of the more blighted sections of Highway 20 is between, on the, on the north side of Highway 20 between Stafford and Clark, there at Harbor Freight. And you talk about a need for improvement for pedestrian access and landscaping and to match up the, the median there. It's really a stark contrast. I guess it's a matter of philosophy. Do we do the median all the way down and then start on the shoulder or, or what? But I know we're not considering, we're not deciding that now, but I just want to get that out there on the record, you know, maybe that can be an additional consideration once we get the money.
Great, yeah. We could definitely look into it. And also at play is Caltrans. With it being their right of way, they've also have some, some different projects that they've been trying to push through with ADA compliance and different things where we've been trying to partner with them and maybe do the sidewalks, but we, we partner up and make some of those, some of those improvements to be a win-win.
Very good. Anybody else have anything? One more time from the public? All right, entertain a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Sacramento Area Council of Governments for Community Design Grant Funding for the Highway 20 Revitalization Corridor Enhancement Project.
Second.
First and the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed. Very good. Thank you, Ben.
You got me for more.
I sure do. So now we're on to number 11, Public Works Department Classification and Compensation Adjustments. Go for it.
All right. So, so with this item, it is to provide classification and compensation options necessary to recruit and retain crucial roles within the Public Works Department. So within the Public Works organizational structure, we're looking at addressing three areas, the laboratory staff, analyst and assistant, the utilities superintendent, and then the assistant public works director positions. And so, I don't know if you look at our structure, this is a really small, and so I apologize for this trying to fit, but basically you have the utility superintendent position that's, that's basically overseeing the first level managers for the utilities divisions, the wastewater and the water treatment plant. And then with the laboratory analyst and assistant position over on this arm of it, and then with the assistant public works director position. So, so I'll start out with the laboratory staff. So it's been difficult to retain and recruit qualified candidates. So only one staff member out of the recently five hired within the last five years still remains. And with that, the laboratory technician. So we looked at, so basically we're having a hard time keeping the technician and the, and the assistants. It was that we were getting really high qualified applicants where they were coming out of college with degrees, four-year degrees and just with the pay and the scope, they were, they were moving on. And so we took a close look at the positions and talked to the union. And we looked at changing the, the title from, for the technician, the laboratory technician to a laboratory analyst and refining the, the, the job description and then also adjusting the pay to be comparable to comparable cities. So, and so with that, with the, so when we looked at the laboratory tech positions, we, the laboratory assistants, we, we thought we need to clean up the whole series. And so with that, we're proposing to, to adjust all of them and, and bring them up to comparable and, and match. And so there's five budgeted positions, two lab analysts, two, one lab analyst, one and two lab assistants. The total impact for this annually was approximately fifty-nine thousand dollars. Fifty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty is a projected annual cost. So the utilities superintendent position, the assistant public works director, utilities been manager position, has been vacant for approximately three years with a past incumbent changing roles and then retiring. The, the position has been, been unable to fill it. When we went out to a job recruiter, basically for that, for that level of expertise and experience, there's just nobody on the market for that position. And so with this, what we're proposing to do is underfill the, the deputy, the assistant public works director utilities position with a utilities superintendent. And so basically it's, it's lowered the technical as far as the, maybe the engineering qualifications or the, or as far as having the operator certificates to, to be in that position and, and it's, but we, we feel like we could fill that, fill that role and it's needed with, with the diversity that we have down there with the water treatment plant, the wastewater plant, the, the laboratory in those different segments, there's a lot going on and it really could use a full-time staff member there coordinating those activities and helping out. So the fiscal impact with that, there's an actual cost savings because of the underfill that we're looking at around twenty-one thousand dollars a year. Okay. And so the assistant public works director, so this one rings true for myself here. And so, as you know, the, the public works director is acting as the interim role for, as the city manager, which is leaving many day-to-day tasks to mid-management. Department currently has two deputy, the department currently has two deputy directors, but city policy and the job specifications require that an assistant director serve as the substitute in the director's absence. So staff is proposing that we temporarily create the assistant public works director while she's acting in the interim role. And so with that, that has a fiscal cost of approximately twenty-two thousand dollars a year. So overall, we're looking at a a net of about sixty thousand dollars annually for those changes. But with that, you know, it's a big number to look at annually increasing, but it really affects approximately seven positions. And it, it doesn't take into consideration the vacancy with the public works director at this time. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the mayor, is that total comp or just salary?
That's total comp. Thank you.
I'm just gonna make a motion if nothing's.
No, no, no motion. I've got one request to speak on the item from Mike Short and he requested it over 24 hours. I'm asking you five minutes if you're here.
All right. It'd be kind of painful being the last item on the agenda, but I've suffered through that so far. I'm Mike Short. I live at 2347 Oregon Way at Shanghai Bend. Mayor Harris, city council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I just want to explain that these are my roots. I'm from Meridian. I went to Sutter High. I'm from Meridian, I went to Sutter High, Yuba College, but I spent 30 years working for the city of Tempe, Arizona. And, uh, I've been through all kinds of council agendas and items like this and I went through it three times and I was really trying to make an effort to understand it and there's just too much there. It's just too much going on, too many moving parts. I even thought about trying to maybe graft it out myself, but I didn't have any flip charts, so I didn't have enough room to do it. I tried to maybe think about doing it on my wall, but blew it off. My concern here is that I'm having a great deal of difficulty in understanding this whole package and I'm con- somewhat concerned that perhaps somebody with maybe a little less experience, that it would be very difficult for you to truly understand what you're voting on because it's such a huge package. And I would strongly suggest that you go with alternate A or approach each of those individually because first off, I'm not sure you're aware that, that you can't go back. This is a done deal. If you pass these resolutions, you'll be obligating the city to at least beginning at $60,000 per year to eternity. You're be impacting your grandchildren and their children. What you will be approving will last forever. All right, and I just, I'm concerned that in light of the, the massive changes you're trying to make, that it's going to be impossible for any constituent, constituent to understand what you're doing and plus you trying to describe what you're doing. So I guess I would really encourage you to go with alternate A. I, I know there are a lot of changes that have occurred in public works and those do need to address, be addressed in some manner, but I think going at this, you know, big one fell swoop is just too much. Thank you.
Yeah, I think he means one. All right, anybody else care to speak? Thank you, sir. All right, that being said.
Okay.
And a motion.
Through the mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, staff's recommendation for the public works departments classification and compensations adjustments, uh, A, B, and C.
Let me just clarify, that's motion to approve that?
Yes, I'm sorry, motion to approve, I'm sorry.
All right, motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favors?
Wait, I think there's a discussion.
Uh, I was wanting to discuss before the, uh, motion came forward if I can. Um, no problem. Ben, on, on these, this organizational restructure, um, the things that, and the questions I have is because we're really looking at a organizational chart that we deal with in even private sector where you're trying to get the right people for the right job. And, um, with creating these positions, are we not only going to be able to get the right people for the right job, but are we creating potential advancements within our own ranks, uh, for our loyal employees that's been here, uh, for years, you know, to kind of, um, uh, as you said, the, uh, utility superintendent. I mean, I'm a novice, I don't know whether you need a chemist like the north end or a biologist on the south end to, to run both of those or someone with both. But I want to make sure that we're, as we do this, we're going to be looking within kind of first and giving everyone ample opportunity versus just reaching out of the area. And I realize with the lab analysts, we've had no success because they come in and we can't keep them and they leave because, um, we're basically not salary, uh, um, equality with where they can go 20 minutes down the road and work. Um, so that's kind of my, just to my question, is this physically sound, organizationally sound, and is it going to create an environment for internal advancement with doing these?
So yes, so with the, with the assistant public works director and myself, that's an obvious, um, potential, um, growth for me. Um, and it's temporary, so, so with that it's set up that it's only temporary and it would, when the interim city manager changes, then they would come back and readdress that. And so to add to Mr. Short's comment, that setup is temporary. With the utility superintendent, it's actually underfilling the current position and it's, and it's underfilling it, but it's not eliminating that position. So as that person develops and grows, it, it provides that opportunity. So it, it, um, it allows that opportunity for more internal, um, growth, so, because now, now we have, from not having, um, a qualified applicant, now we do have qualified applicants internally. And then we, we have that room to grow. And then, uh, basically with the lab analyst and lab assistant, it, that's really just a cleanup. We can't keep anybody there. We're adjusting it up approximately 23% for lab analysts to get it within comparable cities.
Yeah, thank you, you clarified. I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity for internal by doing this, so thank you.
All right, thank you. I apologize again if I missed your desire to comment. So we have a, uh, motion to approve staff's recommendation and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And opposed, unanimous, thank you very much, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to city, business of the city council reports, beginning with , uh, council member Boom Garden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in keeping with your request to report out on the meetings that we attended and, and the highlights of those meetings, um, I attended a meeting, uh, in preparation for the cap-to-cap visit. Uh, I've been asked to sit on the public safety committee. Uh, the six items, or five items that we are taking, um, back to Washington DC are the following. Uh, local government response to catastrophic incidents. This is a request that we'll be making on behalf of, uh, the Sacramento region, uh, cities to, uh, for funding to enhance, um, disaster or emergency preparedness. Uh, mobile crisis response teams, this is a, uh, an effort in the Sacramento region that teams mental health professionals with law enforcement, um, to deal with, uh, some of the homeless situation. Uh, the impetus of that is, is that the mental health professional can sometimes deescalate a situation that, uh, involves, uh, the police or law enforcement's interaction with a person, a transient or a homeless person. Uh, urban area security initiative, uh, these are, these are, these are, um, situations, um, where we're again asking for funding for security initiatives. Uh, a wireless early warning opt-out, uh, and that sounds like a misnomer, you're thinking they can opt-out. It's actually, uh, you have to opt-out of the system instead of the current situation or the current, um, the current, uh, right now you have to opt-in. So for instance, um, the emergency notification systems, uh, even the ones we have here locally, you have to go online and, and indicate that you want to participate. Uh, the effort here is that everyone who has a mobile phone would be opted in and you would have to opt-out of that and the effort there is to make sure that more people are notified. And the, uh, pub, the last one here is the public safety responders and psychological assistance. Um, lots and lots of information, um, out there right now about post-traumatic stress, you know, for our first responders, uh, this would be a regional effort to provide support for, uh, any first responder and that's not just police and fire. Uh, that could be public works, that could be, uh, any of our, our city family that has to respond to a, a traumatic incident and that's funding to increase that effort. Um, there'll be more meetings before we head back, which, uh, will be, uh, accompanying on the committee with myself, um, our couple of electeds, but also, um, high-level, uh, police and fire representatives from the Sacramento region. Attended the builders and developers, uh, meeting yesterday that the city hosts, um, found it to be quite interesting and informative. Um, some of my other colleagues here, um, also attended. Builders and developers have some, 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 you know, significant invalid concerns in regards to the city's efforts to, uh, to assist them in what they do. Of course, the city also has its interests, um, in regards to making sure that, that, uh, building and development happens in an orderly fashion and, and helps at least pay some of its way. Um, there were some takeaways from, from staff, uh, I'm not going to go into the details of that, but it was a good, good interaction and I give great kudos to Diana Langley, our interim city manager. She facilitated the, the meeting and, uh, you did a great job. Um, this morning I attended the government affairs committee, which is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. This is an effort by the chamber to, to be more involved or informed about issues involving, uh, locals and state government. Uh, attendees include, uh, uh, city representatives, county representatives, and then representatives from our state and, uh, federal elected officials. Um, today's highlighted in, um, presentation dealt with the United Chamber Advocacy Network, which is basically an effort to unite chambers of commerce, uh, as they, um, can go and advocate for issues at, uh, in Sacramento on the political level. Um, I will, I, you know, one of, and those are the meetings I went to, I will also make this comment, you know, we're, we're in a position now where, uh, we're rapidly approaching, uh, the city's budget process, um, and you've heard me speak here and I will continue to speak about some of the concern that I have in regards to the financial, uh, situation. It's certainly not dire, but it, it demands attention. We have a lot of public groups that are, are coming to us now and you heard some tonight in requests for funding. My personal opinion on that is those should be considered at the same time that we're getting requests from our own, um, city. Um, the, the reason for that is they need to be measured up against the essential services that this city was, um, designed to provide. It's not an intent to deny, uh, any funding for, for any of these agencies, they're doing some fantastic things, but as we need to make difficult decisions in regards to, um, the city's budget, I think that those, those requests should be coming in at the same time. The, uh, the last thing I have is just a follow-up question, um, and I was just wondering, and I guess this goes to you, Diana, um, was there any follow-up or has there been any follow-up yet in discussions with Beal Air Force Base about the Beal Gate? Or is there something that we can do, um, to help that? Because that is a significant deterrent to folks from the air, the airbase to come into and shop and dine in Yuba City.
I'm not aware of any follow-up, but we can make sure to do that.
I think we probably need the concurrence of the rest of the council, but.
I can tell you that I did follow-up.
Perfect.
The, uh, answer that I received was, it was a staffing issue and they did traffic studies and they did, uh, there's also plans for a potential future plan of a new gate in a more centralized location at one point. And they did studies on not only the manpower and the fatigue and whatnot on staff, they simply don't have the staff to man that many gates all, all the time. They did, they also, again, they did a study, it was versus the Doolittle Gate and the travel times between the Doolittle Gate and say, for example, the intersection of Hamilton-Smartville and North Beal Road versus driving around, if you're familiar with the base, you have to go way south before you come back north to the, where the infrastructure is. The timing was almost identical. So, um, that was the answer I received.
Thank you.
Yep. You're done?
I am.
You're done, all right. Councilmember Espandola.
Okay, um, take off my glasses, I can read. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, I'm going to be joining, um, our mayor and councilman Boom Garden to the cap-to-cap and I'm on the workforce and education team. Um, as I get more information on that, I'll share it as well. Um, on March 20th, I was able to be on 93, 93Q and I think they're going to invite several other council members, um, to kind of talk about the process and, okay, so I, I take my glasses, I can't see, if I put them back on, I can see you. Um, now I know how you feel, Mayor. Um, so that, with the glasses on and off, that having, um, um, having the opportunity to speak about the different things that you're doing, that we're doing here on the council. So that was really interesting. Um, on March 20th, I had an opportunity to meet, um, with, uh, GH, the president of Yuba College. And so exploring different courses and training opportunities, um, to, uh, work on some projects with, with him along perhaps, uh, with, uh, Beal Air Force and trying to help out with some of those areas. Um, on March 26th, we had the opportunity to go to the Sac, actually a dinner, um, there was, um, councilman Cardosa and our interim city, uh, manager, uh, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments and I know both you gentlemen participate in that, um, monthly meeting, I believe. And it was really interesting, um, it was a good presentation, um, learned lots. Um, my two takeaways from that particular presentation is, um, on the green means go, which I found really interesting because it really, it talks about establishing local jurisdictions, um, where the infill problems are and the capacity to that and then planning, um, transportation and corridors and those kinds of things around, um, the different parts of our community. And that was, um, quite an interesting learning and it was also, um, board of supervisors were there, Sutter County Board of Supervisors and staff. So it was an opportunity for most of us to be in that room and hear what we think about, um, the sustainable communities projects in the region. The other thing was the prosperity plan. The prosperity plan was, um, talking about future, um, industries and jobs. And so in that, um, learning about the different kinds of potential work in our area and it, and it landed on two particular, um, industries, food and agriculture and healthcare. And in that potential growth, it's looking at from 2040 where our area is heading towards. Um, so it looks like we have some growth potentially to happen here in this community and that was, um, extremely, um, pleasant to hear because some of the times we, we're not hearing exactly that. Um, I did attend on March 29th, um, the Yuba Set of Transit Authority to how councilman, um, Shaw had, um, another commitment. So I have nothing to report, it was just the general agenda items, um, on the, um, agenda for that day. Um, and lastly, one of the things, um, which I'll share with the rest of, um, the council and forward on in email, um, is that I asked to look at what types of industry jobs do we have here in Yuba City in Sutter County? And the reason, um, I'm curious about that is to help with the workforce, in particular going to this cap-to-cap, um, com, um, networking or conference, I don't know exactly, I'm going to be learning. And in that report, um, I received a report from, let me get to it, um, from EDC, the Economic Development Corporation for US Sutter. And in their report, their last report, um, which was the industry snapshot in the city of Yuba City for the quarter of 28, uh, 2018, the fourth quarter, which was the last quarter, um, last year, that the main, the, the, the highest, um, number of employees that we have in Yuba City is, I, I was kind of really surprised when I saw this and, and I think when you look at the report, you'll probably find some good interesting information on it, that the highest that we had is, um, retail trade. Um, retail trade, we have over 4,000-plus employees, um, in Yuba City in the, in that particular profession. And then, um, our second, which was healthcare and social assistance, which is about 3,500. And then our third is, um, accommodations and food service, which is about 2,500. Restaurants, yes. So when we look at retail trade, we, the annual average salary that a person earns is about 29,000. When we look at healthcare and social assistance, now we're looking at 43,000. And then if we look at accommodations and food service, now we're down to 19,000 in annual income. So in looking at the data of what is actually occurring in our community, um, you know, as we move forward, uh, in, in our general plan and master plan and all those things that, um, how do we stimulate even more so our economy in Yuba City? And because in the meeting that we had with SAOC, you know, they did mention that our area is a little bit slower to, to grow in the economy compared to the rest of the region in our area. And so I'm just sharing this information with, with all of you because, um, I, I think it's good to look at the data, um, to look at the data, find out what's, what seems to be our main types of employments in this area. But I also looked at some higher paying, paying types of jobs. And in that, you're looking at, you know, construction perhaps, you know, 54,000, manufacturing 56,000, but we're looking at about 1,100, 1,200 jobs of each of those areas. But I found this information really interesting and I'll, I'll forward it on to, to the rest of you. So we can probably have more discussion on, on another day. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, since our last council meeting, I want to say thank you to my fellow councilmembers for covering for me. You guys are great colleagues because I've been in something called tax season, working 12 to 15 hours a day. Hallelujah, I come out of that in 13 days and then it's in the saddle I go. Because with what I do, as I said, we'll be jumping straight into the budget. I'll be spending many days over here at City Hall, going over the budget, looking at different aspects of it to get us prepared for what's coming up in the next couple, couple of months. So with that, I just want to say thank you. I'm looking forward to grabbing the bull by the horns, so to speak. You know, I've been rodeoing as well. And I want to say thank you again for all the help you guys have done. I just do want to comment on Espandola's report there. And we talked about this briefly in our goals and priorities. And it was brought up then that, you're right, the economy has not really grown here like it has others. And one thing that we need to do looking forward is, I think, not so much look at what's here, but we really need to start looking forward, what do we want here? And that's the part that's been missing is we haven't been packaging it well enough to say we want Amazon West Coast headquarters too in Yuba City, you know? I mean, that would be nice, but we got to decide what we want here. And we got to get really inviting to that type of industry and bring those higher paying jobs to bring up our median income. And as it was stated all across, uh, growth in population, growth in median income, growth in jobs, technology, healthcare, there's tons of assets here. That's how we're going to fix this community and that's how we're going to fix this economy. So thanks for the numbers and thanks again for all your help. And I'll have more to report at the next one.
Countdown has begun.
It has.
All right. Vice Mayor Cardosa.
All right, I'd like to start with chamber events. I attended the Wind Down Wednesdays, the city cafe. We had a great turnout there with the ambassadors. Business after hours, the grocery outlet, the mayor and myself attended that. They've been 20 years in the, well, the, the business, we have new owners, but the business has been 20 years in our community, the grocery outlet. Attended the community event for Save Love. Save Love stands for Sutter and Yuba Counties. The Stevens family that owned Stevens Farmhouse, Jeff Stevens got together and got tired of all the trash in our community. So the last Saturday of every month, they get together and they just randomly go up and down roads. Maybe people let them know and they pick up all the trash in the community. Recology is being gracious to accept it all. They started off with under 20 people the first time. The second time around, they were over, they were over 60 and they're getting bigger and batter as we speak. So it's a great community event. And they got, all you gotta do is show up, they got the gloves for you. They ask you to have proper footwear and clothing and then there's a big lunch afterwards. So that's the last Saturday of the month of every month. And they're cleaning up our community little by little. Meetings, had the Sutter Community Affordable Housing Meeting. It was, uh, it's budget time also for them also on the affordable housing. So it was strictly finances. I attended the Regional Housing Authority Meeting, that was closed session. So I'm done on that one, can't say much about that, it was closed session in that meeting. Attended the Yuba Center Transit Authority Meeting with Councilwoman Espandola. Also attended the Regional Waste Management with, with the mayor here. I'll let him speak on that little, little bit after me. SECOG with everybody, the Bill and Commercial Brokers. I attended the LD1 Special Meeting this morning. There is a score at the river's edge of the levee. It's nothing, they, it went public, people are a little excited about it. There's nothing to be concerned about. It's been sitting there for two years since 2017. The DWR and, and Powers Above didn't think that it was nothing necessarily to fix. They're concerned with the river coming up, they'd like to fix it where they could see it and not wait for the water to come over and try working on the issue underwater. So that's going to be, there's going to be some work down there. It's between Stewart Road and Berry Road against the river. There'll be a few trucks, it's a three-day project. It's nothing serious, the levee is still safe, there's nothing to worry about. They just want to make sure that this issue's taken care of before it gets, it gets any worse. Community and city events. I attended the Waffle Wednesday, the last Wednesday of the month at the senior center. Served waffles for a few seniors, had a great fun time. We just had a fire badge pinning earlier tonight. We have six brand-new firefighters and one fire inspector, safety inspector. I, Friday night, I attended, it was called Rise Against Hunger. It's an international hunger relief organization. Helped, I helped a group of the Rotary Club and the Key Club. We made 10,000 meals Friday night. Then these were the Key Clubs from the high school, Yuba City High School, River Valley and Sutter. So we were there for about two hours, made 10,000 meals and these are going to go all over the world. Anybody that's, needs meals, that's where all these go to. Attended Friday, the Every 15 Minute Program hosted by Yuba City High School. That's kids drinking and driving, they did a, they staged a scene of an accident. The aftermath, we had a high school students did a great acting job. I mean, it was like it was real. The Yuba City Police Department helped, our fire department helped. We also had the coroner, Sutter County Coroner was there and the ambulance service. So it was a great presentation. It was like, it was, it was like it was real while you were there. We had a, the students were on one side and we had a lot of citizens also there that watched it also. Attended the Home Garden Show. And last but not least, as you can see, I'm a little bit short on top here. I did the St. Baldric shaving and hair cutting last Saturday. And want to thank council for helping make the donations to help me get to my thousand-dollar plateau. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Boomgarden for doing the honors. And that's it for me.
Well, I think it looks great.
Nice.
All right. In addition to the, you know, many, many public meetings or, excuse me, events that we attend, I did take some vacation last week. So the week prior, immediately after last council meeting, I did attend SECOG meeting down in Sacramento. And we're discussing, the main focus was the 2020 Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Communities Strategy, which is a big mouthful. But primary out of that, one of the main takeaways was we're talking about not paying taxes necessarily at the pump with your, with your gas prices, but they're going to start taxing us, for lack of a better word, for miles driven. We've heard a little bit of talk about that tonight and there's been some other talk previously. Main question I had, and we still don't know yet, is how we're going to, how they are going to track how many miles we all drive. I don't know how that's going to happen, but that's a question yet to be answered or approached. Now, there was another presentation or a workshop review on the economic benefits of transportation projects. And one of the things that they've identified, and it's no surprise, that access to transportation, public transportation or mobility is a key to a thriving community. And so as you go move forward with plans and different things for your cities, it's important to focus on transportation and access. Getting people to and from work, to and from the store, to and from family, friends, you name it, efficiently and hopefully as green as possible. We did talk about the $100,000 non-competitive grant we discussed tonight. Those, those issue, funding issues also, um, let's see. That is it for SECOG. I am on the, for cap to cap coming up in May, I'm on the Civic Amenities Committee. The theme this time, this year is the hotel industry, a lodging industry. We have yet to have our first meeting for that, but I will be seeking input from our local lodging, lodging association through staff to see what issues they may have that I can bring forward on their behalf once we get to Washington DC. The Citizens Review Committee for the Retirement System Unfunded Liability. I made some decisions on that, we are moving forward. Still, there is a couple of requests made when we brought it up that we began sooner than later. And I've listened to that and we're going to honor that. We will get started, we want to put some policy or at least some guidelines in place before we do so, which would include the scope, the role of the group, the resources that are going to be made available and then the timeframes. We'll have a definite beginning and a definite end to the project. Also set meeting dates and times. The meetings will be, I'm not going to have necessarily a committee. I made the decision to just make it open meetings. I'm sure we'll have hopefully some, several people who will attend regularly and provide input. But I think that also provides some level of transparency and allows other people, if they can't attend every meeting, they can at least come and, and give us their ideas. And that is it. Again, in addition to several community events we've all attended together, so. Anything else? All right, that being said, we're adjourned for tonight, thank you.